There is, uh, Ms. Batten.
Supervisor Graywall?
Uh, participating remotely. Township, Washington County.
Clerk Gonzaldi?
Present, participating remotely at Pittsfield Charter Township.
Treasurer Scribner?
Present, Pittsfield Township, Washtenaw County.
Trustee Edwards Brown?
Present, participating remotely, Pittsfield Township, Washtenaw County.
Trustee Jaffer?
Present, participating remotely, Pittsfield Township, Washtenaw County.
Oops, sorry. Trustee Crone?
Present, uh, participating remotely from Pittsfield Township in Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Present, um, here in Pittsfield Township, Washtenaw County.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven members present.
Thank you. I could request a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting, please.
Uh, Supervisor Graywall, um, uh, we need to have it on the record that, uh, trustee Erda Thompson and treasurer Scribner are participating remotely. Sorry.
Here remotely.
Got it.
Here remotely.
Thank you.
Now, a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all of them say aye.
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 All right, we'll move to the first portion of the public comment period, if there's any members of the public. Go ahead.
Is, uh, is this, this is Christina Laronas, I've raised my hand, thank you. Uh, Christina Laronas, 151 East Textile Road, and I'd just like to ask, as I always do, that we have our know-through truck signs posted in accordance with the Pittsfield Township Truck Route Ordinance, and the roads that need to be posted are in the Pittsfield Preserve neighborhood, and they've not been posted since the Truck Route Ordinance was adopted, although nearly every other neighborhood has been posted, so we've waited very, very patiently, and we would like to be, uh, treated as any other neighborhood in Pittsfield Charter Township. The roads that are missing the signs are Campbell Road, Penn Road, Stone School Road, and Morgan Road. And it's just very important that these get posted, particularly because Textile Road has now been turned into a commercial truck route. And because of this, Campbell Road in particular is at risk because trucks could easily cut through. You've got work coming up on Michigan Ave. It's time to get that neighborhood protected. It's a rural residential neighborhood, just like other rural residential neighborhoods that are already posted. So, we're asking to be treated as every other neighborhood in the township is, in accordance with your own ordinance. You don't need to set up a policy, or review it by a committee, or do anything. You already have the ordinance adopted, which states what roads are know-through truck routes. And you can just email or call the Washtenaw County Road Commission Administration, and then they'll help you through the process, as they have on every other road that's been posted. Thank you.
Thank you. First, the first portion of the public period, now that members of the public?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, we'll then move on, if there's any responses? Yes, ma'am.
Um, is there a reason why we can't get this posted? I mean, Ms. Laronas has been to the board quite a few times. Can we make the email, make the emails, make the phone call? And I, I know, I live on a dirt road, and I know, before we know it, spring's gonna be here, and we need, we need to control those dirt roads because of weight restrictions. All right, so if we have the signs posted, then we can do something about it. So, I'd really like to see something come and make sure that these roads are addressed sooner than the spring thaw comes upon us. Because, you guys, before we know it, it's gonna be here. If we could please do it, I'd appreciate it very much.
No, absolutely, and I'm happy to share with you the communication packet that was put on there to get you some background, um, on that, and then you can take it from there, and so far as what you'd like to see as next step, so. Um, there's any other additional comments or responses? Right, seeing none, we'll then move on to approval of minutes. Uh, if I could get a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting held on, um, January 27th, 2021?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting held on, the regular meeting held on January 27th, 2021.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any questions, comments, changes by the board? Seeing none, all of them say aye.
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 Now looking for a motion to approve the minutes for our working session also held on January 27th, 2021.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the working session held on January 27th, 2021.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those, uh, any changes or comments by the board? Seeing none, all of them say aye.
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 Seeing none. Uh, we'll move to communications, um, if there's no questions or comments, if I can get a motion to receive and file, please?
Madam Chair, I move to receive and file communications.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all of them say aye.
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 Seeing none. All right, we move right along to consent agenda items 8.1 to 8.7.
Madam Chair, I move to agenda 8.1 to 8.7.
Second. Moved in seconded, any questions, comments, or discussion by the board at any time? All right, seeing none, all of them say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Seeing none. Motion carries. We'll turn it over to you, my pleasure, for your, uh, winter tax report for deadline due.
Um, good evening. Tonight, I want to remind everyone that February 16th, 2021, is the last day to pay the 2020 winter taxes on time. Typically, it is on February 14th, however, this year it falls on a weekend, so the due date is moved to the next business day, February 16th. This allows residents two extra days to get their taxes in on time. Payments received on February 17th, 2021 will receive interest and penalties. The unpaid 2020 real property taxes will be turned over to the county March 1st, 2021, for collection. The township will continue to collect the business personal property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion around any of that, questions by anybody? Okay, seeing none, uh, can we have a motion to receive and file, please?
Madam Chair, I move to receive and file the report from the treasurer on the deadline for winter taxes.
Second. Second.
All right, um, moved in seconded, all of them say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Seeing none. All right, motion carries, um, we'll then move on to 11.1, if I could get a motion to adopt resolution 21-09.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution to recommend green building standards to the Planning Commission for new and redevelopments in Pittsfield Township. Resolution 21-09.
Okay. All right, moved in seconded, this is obviously, um, something that I've complied for your consideration, based on all the work that we've been doing over many years. If there's any questions or comments, happy to take them.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, I really like this whole idea, um, thank you for putting it together. Um, I would just like to, uh, uh, advocate or request, and it might not go exactly with this, um, uh, resolution, but I'm trying to advocate that, um, perhaps, uh, we, um, inquire into consulting services with, uh, a conservation or environmentalist sustainability consultant, um, on behalf of the whole board, um, and possibly suggest in future, maybe a working session with maybe one or two of these consultants, just to get a better understanding. Because as these matters come up, although, uh, the supervisor is so very knowledgeable, and we're very lucky that she knows and understands a lot of this stuff. I, I, as a board member, am not as comfortable with, you know, trying to figure out the right things to do as it pertains to, you know, tree conservation, or, uh, emission studies and, and issues like that. So, uh, I'm just putting that comment out there for future reference. Thank you.
Absolutely, I appreciate that very much, um, I think that's a good point, um, I think we can talk about it briefly, uh, following the adoption of the preservation plan, and then we adopted the sustainability blueprint last year as well. In fact, uh, the meeting right before, uh, the pandemic hit. So, um, I think, um, you know, as these sort of move forward on, um, a lot of the, uh, recommendations that were made out of that sustainability blueprint, which is what is driving this resolution here tonight as well, uh, that is definitely a to-do as well, in terms of creating a larger, uh, plan and vision for how we do, um, conservation throughout township, uh, green spaces, and not just in a reactive way, but in a more sort of thoughtful and proactive way. So, um, you know, it's something that the Sustainability Committee would like to be discussing as well, and so we'll get their recommendations to kind of keep that moving along. I think it never hurts to be talking about it, and I think we're fortunate, really, to live in a community like Washtenaw County, where we have a number of nonprofits and folks that are engaged in this work, and it will help us. Because as you all well know, I'm a peaceful conservative, and I'm not really the like. Heavenly consultants, I'm paying them very much, but I get to the point, getting third parties to, um, meet us in a discussion where, uh, we might get a more broader macro view on things. I think that's obviously a good idea, I'd like to take a note of that, and let's see, uh, when it's a good time, uh, case workout, we'll, we'll try and make that happen. Uh, and hopefully, uh, some of you may or may not know, but the post went out last year, we were going to do a forum and all of those sort of things, which all got delayed last year because of the pandemic. It's gonna be actually a panel of folks from the Conservancy and a bunch of other people, but yeah. Definitely things that we need to do more of on this front. Um, additional questions, comments, by anybody? All right, seeing none, Sebastian, please go ahead.
Supervisor Graywall?
Yes.
Clerk Gonzaldi?
Yes.
Treasurer Scribner?
Yes.
Trustee Edwards Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Jaffer?
Yes.
Trustee Crone?
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven ayes.
Thank you. Uh, we'll obviously be sharing copies of this with the Planning Commission and the related stakeholders and parties. Uh, we'll move on to the next two resolutions, which come in the heels of the comments on the remaining, uh, presentation to the Board of Michigan Ave Project, if I could get a motion for resolution 21-10, please.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution to request the Michigan Department of Transportation to provide for safer left-turn lanes to Michigan Avenue from residential neighborhoods as part of the 2022 Michigan Avenue Reconstruction Project, resolution 21-10.
Second.
Moved in seconded, please stop at the stand, please, if there's any questions, happy to try to address them. All right, Sebastian, back to you.
Clerk Gonzaldi?
Yes.
Treasurer Scribner?
Yes.
Trustee Edwards Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Jaffer?
Yes.
Trustee Crone?
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Graywall?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven ayes.
Thank you. Uh, we'll then move to, um, adoption of 21-11, please.
Madam Chair, I move...
Go ahead. Appreciate it.
Uh, I move to adopt a resolution to request the Michigan Department of Transportation to designate paved shoulders as multi-use pathways as part of the 2022 Michigan Avenue Reconstruction Project, resolution 21-11.
Support.
Moving supported. Any questions or comments by the board, any of this? We'll probably be looking at various, um, ways to address this. It could even be one of the things that, um, like we stated, still nodding to, um, trying to paint the shoulders, which the state has been doing with green, um, so we'll see, we'll see how it all pans out, but, uh, obviously, we, um, will find today. Ms. Sebastian?
Treasurer Scribner?
Yes.
Trustee Edwards Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Jaffer?
Yes.
Trustee Crone?
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Graywall?
Yes.
Clerk Gonzaldi?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven ayes.
Thank you. We'll then move on to 11.4, if I could get a motion to adopt resolution 21-08.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution to increase the per-inspection fee that the township may pay for independent contract building and trade inspections from $30 to $40 per inspection, resolution 21-08.
Support.
Moving supported, um, any questions or comments, I know Mr. Wildin is in attendance, uh, yes, trustee Edwards Brown?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. I was just wondering, was there a complaint registered, or what was the impetus behind this? I did see the chart where other municipalities fall, but I didn't see anything that really suggested why this is coming forward at this point.
Sure, and, um, I know well enough that when it comes to the building department, I threw it over to Mr. Wildin, so please take it away from him.
Yeah, good evening, um, we are just trying to stay competitive because the pool of inspectors out there is very limited. Um, and the, our numbers that we've been paying for a number of years is pretty much, uh, falling behind, uh, the competition. And where everyone else is probably gonna be raising theirs again. Um, we, uh, can hold our own with a, with a lower amount because of the volume of inspections that Pittsfield Township provides, uh, for these inspectors. Plus, primarily, we have pretty much all paved roads. So, if you compare driving around out in Chelsea area and that, where you're bouncing down dirt roads and beating up your own car, um, we look pretty good, um, when you can go into a subdivision and make multiple inspections and, and, uh, and not damage your vehicle and, and, uh, get done in a, in a faster period of time. So, we are able to, I don't hate to say get away with it, but we are able to, uh, uh, provide, uh, uh, the fee, which is competitive, it's not on the high end, um, but it is, uh, with the volume, we, uh, we can attract, uh, good inspectors.
Okay, did I ask you questions? Okay.
Uh, sort of, so what I think I heard you say was, because of the volume, we're able to pay less. But then I heard you say that the recommendation is that we pay more.
Well, right now, we're at about the bottom of the scale for the entire county. Um, and so we're not even really competitive. Um, so the, I mean, right now, the, if you look at the communities that we're competing with, they're paying, and the neighborhood of, uh, you know, probably average around $45 per inspection. Um, and so when we're in competition to, to, uh, get a hold of inspectors and to hold them with us and to encourage them to come, uh, do our work for us, then I'd at least want to be in, in the range that we're competitive.
And also to address maybe a question on the timing issue as well, is that, uh, the building department, uh, since about, uh, 14 months, which has had a series of, uh, attrition and two designations, long, long-term folks retiring, and so I think we're looking at the timing and so far as making sure that the folks that are either coming back or we're attracting are folks, um, that are, you know, the caliber that we would like.
Okay, well, thank you. I think that time around, I heard the answer. So, in order to be competitive, when we need this service and some other municipality needs the service, you want us to be more, um, in line with what others are paying. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Additional questions, comments by the board? Thank you. Right, thank you, Mr. Wildin, appreciated, all, um, of committee, Sebastian, miss?
Trustee Edwards Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Jaffer?
Yes.
Trustee Crone?
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Graywall?
Yes.
Clerk Gonzaldi?
Yes.
Treasurer Scribner?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven ayes.
Thank you. We'll then move on to 11.5.
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize a supervisor and clerk to enter into a leaf collection service agreement with TJ Services, Inc., for Oak Hill subdivision, for a cost not to exceed $27,000 per year, subject to township attorney approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded, I think the background statement is reasonable, it's time for a, um, our team has been looking with the residents in the neighborhood for a year, and offish or so, and, and I thank, uh, both, uh, Director Hirschberger and, um, Ralph, for, uh, bringing and working on getting this, um, proposal in front of us today. And, um, this has also been a benefit to the neighborhood, and folks have looked at it, and finally, uh, seems like a solution where folks, uh, who have come around under consensus around. But, board has any questions, it became three of us, so we are best reserved to hear your opinion.
I do.
Please go ahead, yes, please.
Madam Chair, um, how will we be, um, assessing thi- this cost? Is it gonna go on their property taxes, or are they getting individual bills?
So, the proposal and the request in front of the board today is to pay for this service, uh, to general fund, I believe. That's what the background statement says, um, so it is a unique neighborhood, and, um, that is the question that this is going to be brought to.
Okay, so the, the, the homeowners aren't, aren't having to pick up the tab on this?
At this time, not, if the board is to approve this question.
Okay, all right.
Yes, certain body?
I, I just have a, a general comment, because I, you know, when this came before the board, um, you know, I struggled with this item because the cost is $27,000 per, per year for leaf vacuuming, that only applies to one subdivision that holds approximately 50 pro- properties. And it's a cost that I have to assume is going to last in perpetuity. Um, while I'm sympathetic to those homeowners, because they live in a unique area, and they have, you know, large, beautiful trees. And I remember them coming to the board and, and them explaining how difficult, um, it was to bag these leaves, and understanding that it was very labor-intensive and physically demanding. But I, I have a problem with doing this carve-out for this one subdivision because i- it is a lot of money. I mean, you know, paying $27,000 a year, even $25,000 a year, over four years, that's, you know, over $100,000, and that, that's a lot. And with, I, I feel like it's problematic to have the, you know, residents of the township actually pay for this service for this one little sub, not one little, but this subdivision, uh, without asking the residents to, uh, pay through an assess- assessment, or possibly a grant-sharing type of situ- arrangement, or even through a user fee, um, especially since this same service is not gonna be offered to anyone else. So, the people who are, are paying into the utilities funds through user fees are going to be the ones who are going to pay for this neighborhood to have this, uh, leaf vacuuming service, which, which although I, I understand it, I, I find it very problematic because possibly, maybe, possibly other residents want to do it, or other homeowners want to do it. And, and I, I generally just find this very costly, so, thank you.
Absolutely, and this is a reminder to the board, too, that this neighborhood was carved out previously in, uh, the CL and is exempt from the burn, uh, requirement, so they would burn the leaves. Uh, so what this now is doing is carving an exception for them, uh, that requires them to adhere to, uh, the no-burns, uh, but, uh, but provide for the leaves collection, piece of it. Um, I saw your hand up, trustee, Ms. Brown, please go ahead. Please go ahead, trustee Edwards Brown, yes?
Thank you, so, just to build on what Clerk Gonzaldi said, are there other subdivisions within the township that have this same issue? I too remember when the folks from this particular subdivision came in. But I think the point that Clerk Gonzaldi made, that maybe there are others who would want the same... I hesitate to call it a perk, but they're, they're not paying for it, so it does seem like a perk, and...
Yeah, there's, uh, the best of our knowledge, no, which is why I just said what I did, insofar as a reminder, that this neighborhood was carved out as an exception previously, uh, in our ZO, like I said, where they did not have to adhere to the, the no-burn requirements. And now that we're imposing and requiring that they do not, uh, burn their leaves, obviously. And I see that Director Hirschberger went off the commute, uh, would you like to say something to that? Director Hirschberger, I know you work with the neighborhood a lot as well.
Uh, yes, good evening, everybody, uh, appreciate the time tonight, and, um, the only thing I can add, I know that the board document that we sent, uh, in support of the recommendation, um, really kind of gives all the details, but as kind of Supervisor Graywall had indicated, that prior to 2011, when we did updates to the burn ordinance, um, there was a specific carve-out for this one neighborhood to allow them to continue to burn leaves. Um, and as we have made contact with Public Health Department, the state of Michigan, um, the entire state really is pushing hard, um, trying to get away, uh, from open burning of yard debris, specifically leaves, and, and, um, had been very supportive of us in recommending to our township, which we were one of the few ti- one of the fewer townships in the state that still did that. Um, so, um, it was, we had numerous conversations with the neighborhood, um, and got a lot of, uh, good feedback from the neighbors, and it was attempts to try to reach a compromise. At the end of the day, um, we got, um, what we needed, uh, from the compromise in that we can move forward with the open burning ordinance as we now have it, um, which completely prohibits open burning of yard debris in residentially zoned areas. Um, but with the caveat that the compromise also resulted in trying to maintain some exception for that one neighborhood that they did previously had, uh, to deal with their leaf pickup because of the huge mature trees that they have in their neighborhood.
Oh, thank you, but I have to say that I, I'm really torn, because do we spend $27,000 a year for poor neighborhoods who need, I don't know, help in some way? I, I'm torn, so.
Yeah, and I think I get to point, and for me, I think it's really about, um, I know that we want to be equal, but we also want to be fair. And I think this is more on the latter scale of things, is that we be fair, uh, to a community that has a situation, a circumstance that is unique and different from the rest of the township, and we're trying to make sure that they adhere to, um, to the requirements, rules, and regulations without being overly burdened, um, by, um, the situation that, that you are, who are there now, recall, with regards to these, these. Any special questions, comments, thoughts, anything else that you have, searches for you?
Uh, are all the, the lots the same size? Or are some larger than the others?
Some are larger than the others, but they're on, are pretty big lots, uh, and I see Director Hirschberger again, please go ahead, sir.
So...
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, what my, what my point is, if you have an acre lot, and if you have three acres, are we gonna pay for the one acre? And then, why would somebody want to rake the three acres? I mean, it seems like, you know, the larger ones should just do around their houses, I, and I don't know how do you make it fair, but it's just a lot of leaves, um, and would everybody do all those? Or would they just leave them on the ground?
So, we, so in doing the, um, request for quotes, that was one of the things that we specified, that regardless of size of lot, um, the agreement was, um, if you wanted to participate, you had to get your leaves out to the curbside. Um, and, uh, the company TJ's agreed that it didn't matter about lot size, they would do a flat rate. Um, and they would come, um, four times a year, twice in the spring, twice in the fall, to simply vacuum those leaves up and take them away, rather than that you had them out at the curb. So, um, so we kind of got away from the, uh, parcel size issue, and just simply with a flat rate across the board.
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair, um, I do live by this neighborhood here, and I have to admit, my husband and I do go in there. We do rescue the, the leaves for our garden. Um, a lot of the, a lot of the neighbors will rake them to the street, but my concern is if they're only getting picked up twice in the fall, those leaves are gonna end up just blowing down the road. I mean, most of the people are, are very conscious, and they'll, they'll bag them, and then they'll have them staged by their house, nobody interferes with them, and then at collection day, they put them out at the road. I know we do have a small park in there that we've never developed. Um, maybe for this year, we just do it once, and next year, maybe come up with a different program and put, um, large roll-off boxes for the people to put them in there. Maybe that would be more conducive, you know... You know, I'm trying to think of something that-
I agree. This is a conversation that went on for more than a year. There's a reason that this has taken so long to come to the Board is because we've had a series of these discussions and dialogues and public forums and engagement rounds with the neighborhood. And yes, we do have a small parcel there. We looked at it. The viability of using that did not go through. That was one of the things that I, first thing I said, he feels that it could be sort of a compost facility almost, like.
Right.
So that was thrown out there. And to your point, I think eventually this compromise solution is one because the residents do continue to have some questions and concerns about it, is very much one where we said that let's try it. It may or may not work. And you raise a good point that because, and also they don't have purpose, you well know, and so will the leaves that get raked actually say then how well this even the leaf collection service works. So I think the goal that we have at this point right now is to have this approved and put in for a year, see how the solution works or doesn't work. And then have another public forum with the residents later this year to see what the experiences have been like and maybe tweaks changes and what else we need to be doing moving forward. So that was definitely part of that discussion as well.
All right. And then to Ms. Scribner, the lots in there are probably a half acre. One of them might reach an acre, to give you an idea, that they're not large, but they're not small either. The ones on Merritt Road would be on the smaller side, and that would be the area that I would see if they raked it to the front, that they would be dispersed up and down the road. You know, unless we knew exactly what day they were coming in to do it, so give the residents a time to pull it to the curb or really not to the curb, to the dirt road for them to be collected.
So if they're that size, could we do it once in the fall and once in the spring? That would cut it in half as a trial to see how it works this year and then evaluate it next year.
No, I would recommend two in the fall and none in the spring. It's a tremendous amount of leaves. We got over five hundred bags of leaves out of there this fall for our own property.
So they don't need it in the spring then?
I think the fall would be more advantageous.
Well, that would cut the price in half too, right?
Although for this year, I would counter it because they haven't had the service at all. We've reached a time of, and again, Director Hirschberger can speak to that, but. Yes, trustee, Ms. Brown? You're on mute now.
I don't want my dog to start barking. But I'm sorry, I just have one more question. And I understand about the leaves and the burning and that this is being viewed as a compromise. Was there any reason not to assess anything at all for this service?
I think it was built off on the assumption that there was always an exception that was made to this neighborhood. And there's a lot of pushback by a number of people that say, why are you not letting this continue to burn? And so there's the pushback. And again, I told them this would be something I would bring to the Board. And if you agreed to pay for it, great. And if you don't today, the Board says, no, we don't want to pay for it. Then it would be something for the neighborhood to discuss and talk about.
Okay. I know I said I only got one more question, but I have one more. So if I'm remembering correctly, a hundred percent of the folks didn't sign on to this, right?
No, but-
So what happens to their leaves?
Well, they have a choice on whether or not to participate in the leaf collection, but this is the most folks that we've had agree on one solution. So, yeah, which is why I had them do their own signature collection and submitted it so you all have a good idea in terms of what's going on and then take it from there in terms of essentially.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, trustee.
So given what we've been discussing, and I also have some ambivalence about providing this service just for one unique subdivision, and I understand, you know, what's going on with there. Is there a provision that we could cut this in half and not do any pickup in the spring? And would TJ's agree with that is, I guess, one of my concerns? Or was there contract contingent on to spring and fall?
Mr. Wynek, do you want to speak to that, please? If you have that information.
Yep. Good evening, Board. Yeah. I have posed that to them and they would be willing to do just a fall or spring pickup, whichever we desired. I think we went forward with no fall pickup this year, thinking they may need some cleanup or something for this coming spring, something to take care of that. So this is why this was proposed this way. But yes, they would, to answer your question, they would do a fall pickup.
Yes, trustee.
Okay. So I would support a compromise to the compromise.
I would support you.
Which would be what? Could you specify that, please, trustee?
To your phone.
What trustee Krone was inquiring about, I would support a compromise to the compromise, which is not to do it multiple times.
I agree.
Cut it in half.
Do it once in the spring and once in the fall? I just want to make sure I understand.
I don't know. Trustee Erder Thompson, what were you suggesting?
My recommendation should be the fall because that's where the predominant leaves come down. And that's when they would want to get most of them out. Some of the neighbors do use services to clean it up, people who have to do community service. They do go in there and take it, you know, get their community time by bagging it for people. I mean, I know there's other ways we can get people in there to bag it up, but I do, you know, twice in the fall, I think would help them so that they don't burn. I mean, I am all supportive of not burning in there because I smell it, you know? So wow, the price tag's pretty, pretty, pretty high.
And they use people who have community service hours to clean up these leaves?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not understanding how that qualifies as community service, but that's a different topic. Okay.
I do know what happens. I do know what happens.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that we only do it in the fall.
Did you make the motion, trustee? Did you make your motion?
I would like to offer a friendly amendment.
That's who made the original.
Trustee Krone.
Trustee Krone. Thank you. So I just want to make sure that we're all done with questions and comments and questions.
I will, I would accept that as an amendment to my motion that we only have two pickups and we do it in the fall. And we, this is a pilot program to see how it works and then we can come revisit it next year and see what's going on.
And I agree.
Who seconded that?
Trustee Jaffer.
Jaffer, is that acceptable to you, sir?
Yes.
All right. So we have a revised motion on the floor, which is to change the original request in case for, now we're assuming that this would go down by exactly half. Mr. Wynek, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you say that that would cut this down to exactly like by half? Or would we say it would be a little more? I don't know. I just want to make sure that we get that here, here.
Yes, I believe we can, we can say that we cut it in half. It'd be, it's base per pickup, so the one twenty-five per removal, so two fifty for the fall per resident.
Okay.
That would then be about thirteen-five. So we've cut it down to thirteen-five a year. So the revised motion on the floor is to provide for the TJ's service for Oak Hill subdivision for a cost of fifteen, thirteen thousand, five hundred a year, which would include two pickups in the fall only. Let me show this there is that if the residents want to come back and say, hey, we want to do one in the spring and one in the fall, I think that should be fine with us. So I think if you don't specify two in the fall and just say that we're not paying more than thirteen-five, if two pickups a year, I think that should suffice for the motion. Does that agree?
Yes.
Great.
I will accept it. Yes.
The motion is for a cost of fifteen, thirteen thousand, five hundred, for two pickups a year for the-
Okay.
And trustee Brown and Jaffer respectively accept that as-
Yes. It's acceptable.
And if there's no other discussions on this, please say aye.
Aye.
The call's same time?
Nay.
How was that, sir? We have one nay?
Yeah.
Right? With that, the motion carries. Well, you know, if and when you hear anything additional on this, we'll be there. Move on to eleven point six, if I can get a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into an agreement with Stand Tech Consulting, Michigan, Inc., for design engineering services relating to Michigan Avenue Sewer Rehabilitation Project for an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars, subject to the township attorney approval.
Support.
We've been supported. Any questions, comments? Of course, we can hear the working section that we had last time and Mr. Lyons in attendance. Say none. All of them say aye.
Aye.
All saying the same. Right? Motion carries. Also following up from our last meeting is twelve point one, to adopt a second reading. The motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt it, second reading, COA number two-one dash two-one-two, an ordinance to amend the Pittsfield Charter Township zoning ordinance.
Second. We've been supported. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I just want some clarifying. So we're proposing to group housing on large, on new developments to allow the grouping of housing for density and leave open space. And the open space would then be accessible by other members of the public? Is that how we're, I'm looking at this?
It would be on a case-by-case basis. It would allow the planning commission to provide for that. It's not mandated or required, but it would be something that could be made possible.
So would the residents of a new development then have to agree to this going in? Is it just up to the developer to make this decision if?
The planning commission will either approve or require that it's part of the site non-able process. So it will be determined even before the homes are built, in terms of, yeah.
Okay. And then to, just to extend that out, if there is an open space, is it, and it's considered public access, does the township have any responsibility for maintaining it?
Again, it's going to be a function of how it all comes up. Typically, the answer would be no, you know, because, well, it depends, right? I guess because if it's designated as a public park, then the township would be. But if it's just green space and it's publicly accessible, then it would be a function of how the development agreement is written too. Because as you know, oh, about four, some years ago, the road commission stopped accepting roads as public roads until they're private roads. So in the development agreement, the township is now having the developer's sign is to ensure that the developer is making the requisite amount of contributions to ensure that there is enough funding in there for, to start a good seed money for the maintenance of those roads. Because we don't want to leave the residents high and dry because suddenly, you know, five, 10 years later, they find out, oh, my God, we have to pay for the maintenance of these roads. And as well, we can all attest to, because you approved the maintenance agreement to the road commission, that's an expensive proposition to be had. So those would be things that would be taken into account within each of the development agreements.
Okay. So just because it's open green space and designated as such that it can't be built on, doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be open to the public and accessible by the general public?
No, it does not.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Additional questions? Yes, Ms. and Bobby?
I'm not really sure what to do about this, but at the last, when we did our first reading, I noticed that the language for updating the zoning map did not work with the recently adopted way that we update the zoning map. It's not consistent with how the zoning map gets updated. And the only reason why I bring this up is because I did work with the planning commission on a more seamless process on how to update this map. Because as the township clerk, I'm kind of responsible for these records, but the way that they get updated didn't, wasn't really in line with the way things should get done for efficiency. And because now we have electronic stuff. And so I don't know whether I should say yes or say no, or say yes and then hope that this language gets fixed? I don't know.
I know you brought this up last time and Mr. Parline was in attendance and he said that he would address that with you and for you. So if I'm in beyond that, I'll just be, I'll speak for that. Additional questions or comments to be signed by the Board? Right? Saying that, Ms. Sebastian, I will turn it over to you.
Trustee Jaffer?
Yes.
Trustee Krone?
Yes.
Trustee Erder Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Graywall?
Yes.
Clerk Enzaldi?
Yes.
Treasurer Scribner?
Yes.
Trustee Edwards-Brown?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven yeas.
Thank you. This is how many years on our public meetings meeting. Right? Saying that, we'll move on to the second portion of our public commentary with the members of the public.
Christina Laronas?
Thank you. Christina Laronas, one fifty-one, East Textile Road. Since we're doing these meetings on Zoom, wouldn't it be a great idea to figure out a way to post the public meetings online and video? We had a, we did a lot of work with the Washtenaw County Road Commission because they were not doing minutes at the meeting. They were not recording their meetings, even in an audio form. And a number of us were working very hard on transparency at the Washtenaw County Road Commission. And they are now posting their meetings on YouTube. And it's so easy now to post meetings on YouTube. We're already doing these virtually now because of Zoom meetings having to be done. I wonder if someone at the township in the IT department could look at posting your board meetings online for full transparency. It just would be so great for the public to be able to go back and watch these meetings again and not, you know, not just the minutes, actually see the meeting. Because the discussions that you've had were very good tonight, was very enlightening. And the, you have a lot of very large projects coming up, particularly the M.DOT project and the sewer project. And there's, there should be a lot of impact on a lot of residents with that sewer project. So I think it would be great if you could put these up online in video form. And then just one last comment is that there is a conservation easement on Hickory Woods Park. I noticed that part of the new sewer runs on the southern boundary through Hickory Woods Park. You'll need to check with Southeast Michigan Land Conservancy to just make sure that that's done in accordance with the conservation easement that's on Hickory Woods Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional papers for public comments?
That's all.
Okay. Ms. Sebastian? Is there any response? Right? Saying that, I am going to call for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Support.
Moving to support it, all of them say aye.
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 Motion carries. Good to see everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Thank you. Have a safe, good night.
Be safe.
Yep.
Bye-bye, guys.
Bye.